Now call to order the 18th, 2024, popular city council meeting. Tonight I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Kroux, council members Albrecht, Buzagian, as well as city staff. If you would like to provide, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Tonight I will ask our new city clerk, Lisa Pope, to lead us in the pledge.
If you would please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and
Thank you so much. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
David for move and Peter for second. Does our city attorney have a report on the closed session that we held starting at 5:30?
Yes, thinking about it, Mayor, the city council met starting at 5:30. Three closed session items, potential litigation against the city regarding existing facts and circumstances that may result in litigation but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs, of potential initiation of litigation, and a last item regarding discussion of an existing lawsuit for which the case name is not disclosed is to avoid jeopardizing ongoing settlement negotiations. The council provided a direction to staff and council authorize the filing of one item of litigation, the particulars of which will be made available after it is, and otherwise took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt. I'd like to ask Deputy Di Matteo to come up and give the sheriff's crime report from May to June 2024.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Di Matteo of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Station, and I've got the crime report for May and June. This is going to be a combined report, and we have a total of 19 Part 1 crimes for May and 15 crimes for June, combining to make 34 crimes for both months. Let's get into it. We did have six residential burglaries. Five of those burglaries occurred in May. Of the five, one was an unsuccessful nighttime attempt because the residents were home. Two occurred in the middle of the day, backyard entry with window smash, and the other two occurred at night with backyard entry and window smash. The lone June burglary occurred in the morning. Resident left to get breakfast and run errands. When they returned, they noticed the backyard window was smashed and the house was ransacked. A firearm was stolen from an unlocked office desk, and $6,000 was taken from an unsecured bag in the master closet. We did have two burglaries to businesses, five grand theft incidents, three vehicle burglaries, five thefts, six petty thefts, and four stolen cars. Those stolen cars were an Audi A5, a Toyota Prius, a Tesla Model 3, however, that vehicle was recovered the same day, and a Dodge Ram pickup. This concludes my crime report. Are any questions?
Hi, hi.
Sir.
I think we all want to know how you're feeling.
Feeling better, sir. Thank you.
Good to hear. We heard about it was quite a surprise. So thank you for helping and defending our city and doing everything you have to, literally. Couple things, you know, I was looking at the report. Not much has changed too much. I mean, it just seems that trend line down a little bit on thefts, a little bit. But one thing stuck out to me and so happy about, and that's the fatalities. Zero, zero, zero. Zero fatalities on collision, zero fatalities hit and run, and hazardous violations are down. So there's a lot of areas in here that are good.
Yes.
But I did want to ask you this question, and that is, are we, thank you, are we somewhere that you think we could move on?
There's always room for improvement in all aspects of my job, but right now I feel as of June, crime is down eight percent approximately. So it's looking good, and we're just going to have to keep at the usual burglaries, thefts, things that affect the community on a regular basis.
Thanks.
Thank you.
David?
I was just going to join my colleagues and also say it's great to see you, glad you are doing well, and thank you and everyone at the station for helping keeping our city safe.
Thank you.
Only question for you is going back to school, and that's, any special things other than being cautious when we're driving around the city and especially around schools that you would recommend?
Yeah, slow down when you're in a school zone. Just know that the motor deputies are going to be out there monitoring your speed, so don't get a ticket. It'll ruin your week.
Peter?
Also glad to see you back.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to make mention, the noteworthy incidents portion of your report has been filled out much better.
Yes.
In the last year or so, you guys have made significant improvements to that, and I just say to the public, if you get a chance to look at our council pack, it not only includes incident, arrests, and other actions by the police department and by the sheriff's department, and it's just great to see that reported because sometimes the news looks a little bleak, and I think you guys are doing a great job, and it's important that you show that in the report. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Her name's Lily, she's great, and she does a great job.
James?
I have a couple items. First of all, I too am very glad that you are well, and I'm sorry that you were the victim of a, I hope the person's prosecuted and put away. I've mentioned this is like the third or fourth time, we still have on our record an arson that is not ours that does need to be taken off. So do we have a timeline for that?
I know, I know that it was fixed, so.
Well, why, why does it say one?
Doesn't still, okay, so I'll have to double check on that.
And that's the only arson that I'm aware of that we had this year.
Yeah, I fixed that personally. So I know that it's, I just don't know if it's been submitted to the city yet.
Okay.
Probably not.
Let's follow through on that because I've mentioned it a couple times, and then we can make sure that it's done with all the records so it never shows. And finally, I am, one of my, my main concern, the most serious crime we have out here consistently is residential burglary, and while crime is down, we have it looks like about double the number of residential burglaries that we had last year. So what are, what, is that attributable to just, well, let me, like, are these a string that are related, or is it just an individual number of high volume, or?
So it's the, it's the same old, same old with Calabasas, you're going to have the professional burglary crews from the South American, coordinating these burglaries. I don't know if you, but the valley is getting the brunt of these burglaries, so we're pretty fortunate right now. Yeah, it's the same old story with Calabasas and these, once a crew's caught, another one takes their place. It's, it's a tough thing to combat, so. I've been in contact with several HOAs in the community about what they can do to protect their home. I'm in constant contact with some residents and community about that, so I'll make the recommendation now to protect your home first and foremost with, with cameras in the front yard and the backyard. Set your alarms, make sure your windows and doors are locked when you leave, and if you can, create a group chat or a text chain with your neighbors, kind of like a neighborhood watch. You don't have to go and patrol your neighborhood, but just keep in good communication with your neighbors in the event something happens. So if you see something, call the station, our non-emergency line, and report it, and if it's something that had already occurred and it wasn't as pressing, then you can discuss that within your community and decide if you want to notify law enforcement or not, so.
Are these distributed pretty evenly around the city, or is it a certain area that's getting the brunt of it?
Yeah, so it's typically the east end of the city. So most of the burglaries occur on the east side, so everything east of Las Virginas.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to add, I'm so glad that you're okay and back, and thank you for everything. I wanted to add, when we look at the noteworthy incidents, that there was a grand theft where the victim's ring was stolen from her unlocked vehicle. So just another reminder, don't leave valuables in your car and always make sure that your vehicle is locked. And from also what it, even though our year-to-date burglaries is a little bit higher, things have been a little slower recently. I guess I should knock on wood on that while I'm saying that out loud, but
Yeah.
Things have slowed down a little trends now, like towards Encino area.
Yeah.
But just, it's not a reason to let your guard down, just because things could come back to Calabasas, just keep your eye out.
They probably will.
Yeah, right. So keep your eye out for suspicious vehicles and be in contact with your neighbors is one thing. And as, and another thing we realized last year, which we should talk about again, when it gets closer to the time change, people like forget, they leave and don't turn their lights on, or it's just, you have to readjust your lights and really pay attention when the time change is back in October. So thank you again for everything that you and everyone at the station is doing.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? I don't have any cards on this item. Now we're going to move on to announcements and introductions, and I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Kroux.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. First, I want to mention that SB 867 was signed. It's allocating $10 billion for drought, flood, and wildfire resiliency. It'll be on our November ballot as Proposition 4, so allocated in there is $33.5 million to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy for fire resiliency, and also another $48 million to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy for biodiversity. So a lot of good opportunities here for our area. If this measure passes, again, that's going to be Proposition 4 on the November ballot. And then I would like to announce, if I may, the mayor's lunch. We are celebrating our mayor on Thursday, August 22nd. This is put on by our Chamber of Commerce, and I'm sure Mark Levinson is going to give us another plug on this, but it can be said three times tonight and it wouldn't be enough. It's at the Calabasas Country Club, and we, we hope you all can join us. If you're interested, you can find tickets at calabassachamber.org. And you can also, Levinson after the meeting. How's that? That's a good plug, right? I have a few more, but I'll turn it over to.
Thank you. James?
Yes, I did want to take the occasion to congratulate Peter Kroux for having been reelected by acclamation, no challengers in this upcoming election. We, in our 33-year history, we have never had that happen. So I'd like to think that is a testament to their, the public's satisfaction for it. So congratulations, and no election this November.
David?
I'll just join James absolutely, that incredible, our mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, another four years of service to the city, and it's also a testament, as mentioned, to their great work, but also how well the city is working and being run, and hopefully people perceive that. So congratulations to both of you. You get to enjoy the next few months watching others in their election process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Real quick, tomorrow, are you going to mention?
No, no.
At the Calabasas Community Center, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. is our annual food truck event of the summer, but it's going to be a joint event with the Mayor's Youth Council will be there, and there will be a flea mart for the first time, all types.
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm saying it right, from 6:00 to 9:00. So come out, have some food, there's always a DJ, and there's going to be some booths and all types of individuals from all over the valley to Topanga bringing their goods, and take a look, it should be fun. August 20th is also the last for the summer, open mic night at the Listening Lounge at our outdoor amphitheater right in back of the library, and that's, come if you have talent and skill, sign up ahead of time, or just talent and love to be outdoors. There's poetry, we have a local resident who does great poetry, there's artists who sing and perform, so it's really nice. It's, both these events are free. And last is the August 25th, the summer sunset, summer concert night at the lake. It's a blues and R&B band, and it's, again, a great night, 8:00 p.m. Come out, have fun, and have fun time. Thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. I also want to join in, Councilman Buzagian and Shapiro, recognizing both of you, reelection by acclamation. It's really more than what's, it's so much behind the scenes. It's your very, very hard work, both of you, relentlessly. You live it, you breathe it, and we all feel it. So I'm proud to serve with you. I really appreciate the pleasure to learn from you, and I look forward to the future together.
That's so nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just two quick, some of the items that have already been mentioned. The Fall Senior Center brochure, we call it Premier Recreation Brochure, is now available online. For those of you who like to take a class, there's a variety of classes, trips, excursions, it's A through Z, it's unbelievable. And to think that only seven or eight years ago, that was a park lot there in the parking lot. So take advantage of it. And you've mentioned the flea market, so I'll be there with our dog Callie chewing away. That's, that's it.
Great, thank you. And I just want to add, school starting, Las Virginas starts next week, so our roads will have a lot more traffic on them during school hours, especially in the beginning. So everyone should give themselves extra time and just a little extra patience while people get their schedules in order. It's always, just seems like it's always a very stressful time in this community when school goes back with the way. Hopefully it goes smooth this year, and everyone just, if we can have a little patience and gives ourselves some extra time. Wanted to announce that Wild Walnut Park will have its grand opening event on August 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There will be a ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m. with festivities to follow for both young, for our youth and our adults, since Wild Walnut will also have a dog park. There will be free food truck for 150 guests starting at 11:00 a.m., and there will, if there is not enough parking, there will be a shuttle going from Calabasas. Hope that everyone will come out and check out this new jewel in our community, and there'll be more information posted online, but I wanted to make sure that everyone saved the date. So thank you for that. And now along to oral communication, public comment. My first card is Mark Levinson.
Mayor Wainchuk, Council, thank you very much. Mark Levinson, I live in Los Angeles, so I'm the immediate past Chamber of Commerce. Honored this year again to host Mayor Wainchuk, and it will, this year will be a slightly different format. Mayor is creative and arranging for speaker. It's an opportunity not only to come, honor the mayor and the city council, but to learn a little bit about what's happening in the city and surrounding areas. So again, thank you for your ideas, and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it. Our next speaker, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Yasser Vazi.
Hi, I'm Yasser.
And if you can say the city that you live in as well.
Good evening. Right now I'm living on Woodland Hills, but I have a house in Calabasas. My name is Yasser Vazi. First of all, I do apologize for my limited English and performance. Mayor Wainchuk, really appreciated the time that you, you know, to share the issue that I had. And I know compared to here, billions of dollars and millions of dollars, mine is nothing. I just want to talk about my house, that I bought it in Calabasas, and I bought the house last year, and I bought it because of my son that going to high school here, and it's close to high school. And I submitted my plans on September to the city, and since then, I'm still in the city to getting a permit for remodeling and additional square footage. I passed so many steps, like public hearing, you know, those hardest steps. I'm in the minor, but what I'm feeling right now in the city, that I'm not getting help. I feel lonely. I, I didn't want to come here, and I didn't even know about this meeting. This morning, I get an appointment with mayor, but they said there is a council here. I've been calling the office, you know, I didn't get any answer back, nothing. This is my issue, I, you know, I have so many things to say about it, but I don't want to get the time of this meeting, but if, you know.
You know, if you can make sure that our city clerk has your contact information, staff will be in touch with you.
All right.
Okay? That would be the best course of action.
Thank you so much.
Okay? Thank you very much for sharing your concerns with us. Our next speaker is Sarah Basely. And if you can say your city of residence.
Sarah Basely, Topanga.
Thank you.
Thank you, council people, for hearing me. My name is Sarah Basely. My partner, Dr. Chris Hartz, and I inherited a house in Calabasas near the intersection of Old Topanga, in an area that used to be Calabasas, used to be Topanga. We went through probate with our friend Robert Hahn, the previous owner suffered a heart attack and died. The California Supreme Court downtown made me executor and owner. We waited to accept title until selling the house, and we were doing that via escrow. Unfortunately, Mr. Hahn had added an upper story to the house with him. The city Building and Safety Department tried to get him evicted when he was still alive, but this council allowed him to live in there as he was elderly and ill and would have been. This apparently greatly angered Mr. Sparky Cohen of the BNS Department and continued sending threatening messages to Mr. Hahn, appointed, who did nothing but bill the city for $18,000. As soon as Mr. Hahn died, there were signs on all the doors that stated the house which he, Robert, had been living in for decades was now a public threat. They did this without any actual notice, according to the city staffer who posted the signs. Chris and I tried to make the house legal. We came up, we came up with a detailed list of fixes that Mr. Bill Lutback of the city's law firm, which would have cost around $60,000. After Robert's death, Sparky Cohen stated he did not recognize that stipulation and that he wanted detailed repairs, including a new septic system. He did not specify what he wanted, but warned us against taking over legal title to the house. We found a buyer who was willing to make any need of repairs and then retire and move into the house. He hired an engineer and others who went into escrow. However, the city refused to issue him permits or even discuss what it was that Mr. Cohen wanted. They sent the buyer a legal contract that would force buyer and seller to agree to be liable for repairs forever, to pay for the city staff and legal costs forever, and to give up all legal rights pertaining to the house forever. The buyer's lawyer told him it was crazy to sign such agreement. The buyer backed out after a year trying to buy this house. When Chris and I were trying to clean up weeds in a beehive near the water main on the road, Sparky Cohen appeared in a Calabasas city truck, lights flashing. He told us to get off the property and that if we ever entered it again, he would have us arrested and have, quote, "our ashes thrown into jail," unquote. Since then, we have been afraid to enter the property. We must now inform the fire department, we cannot clear the unsafe brush that they have demanded because the city will not allow it. The city is now sent, we've also had a hearing about some of these code violations. The city has now sent a letter while we were out of the country informing us that we are going to court hearing to put the house into receivership for reasons including the house had no water or electricity, even though that was because the city ordered these to be cut off. They gave us 10 days to respond before we were back in the country. We have three requests of the council today. Can we get in writing that the city will not have us automatically arrested if we set foot on our property? Can we please receivership before wasting money for us and in legal costs? Thank you for hearing me. Christopher Hartz wanted to speak further on this, he was supposed to speak first.
Oh, so since we cannot respond if you want to leave your contact with our city clerk.
We sure have.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Christopher Hartz. If you can state your name and city of residence.
Christopher, I'm Dr. Christopher Hartz, live in Topanga with, good evening. My partner Sarah Basely and I inherited a house in Calabasas from our friend Robert Hahn when he passed away. He added an unpermitted story, red tagged by the Calabasas BNS Department after he died. Sarah and I have been trying to fix the house, unpermitted again. It's located near Old Topanga and Mulholland, in an area that was Topanga before 1990. We had agreed on a list of fixes with Bill Lutback, the city's lawyer. Mr. Hahn did not have the money to make them at the time, as he had a heart attack with a triple bypass operation and was bedridden. After he died, we offered to pay for the work done, to be done. Mr. Sparky Cohen declared that he cared nothing about the list of fixes, but did not provide an alternate. A buyer tried for a year to get permits to fix it, agreed which he wanted to fix with permits, and hired an engineer and construction expert, but was refused permits by the city. After spending thousands of dollars, he gave up after a year and withdrew his offer. The final straw was the city contract that stipulated buyer and seller were liable for whatever repairs on the city wanted forever. Buyer and seller were liable for staffing and legal costs the city incurred for this forever, that buyer and seller agreed to give up all legal rights relating to the property. The buyer's lawyer told him he'd be insane to sign such a contract. Three realtors in the area told me that if this became legal precedent, home sales in the city valued, the city values would drop at least 10%. Instead, the city's now trying to get a court to put the house into receivership. It sent a notice by mail, not by personal service, at a state when Sarah and I were out of the country. The reason given are, one, the house is an immediate danger to the surroundings. That's a lie. The house is 100 yards away from the nearest other house and next to a forest. It'd have to get up and move the length of a football field to damage any other house. The building, two, the building has an unpermitted third story. Actually, that was removed. The house has only one story. Other repairs can't be made because the BNS Department will not grant permits or will not even let us on the property. Three, the house does not have electricity. The city ordered it shut off and told the utility to not turn it back on. Four, the house does not have running water. In summary, we have three requests to the council. Can we have in writing the city will not have us automatically arrested? Two, can we stop receivership?
Thank you so.
And three, is there someone we can talk with?
Thank you so much. And if you want to provide your contact information to our city clerk, you said you have.
I'm sorry, could you say the?
Just want to make sure you have provided your contact information to our city clerk.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do not have any other speakers for items not on the agenda. Now we will move on to our consent items. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar? I don't have any cards for items on the consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Ed for motion, Peter for a second. Thank you, the consent calendar is approved. Now we are moving on. Oh, vote, sorry.
Yeah.
Let's take a vote. All those in favor of items two through eight?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All items are approved. Now we will move on to new business. We are going to have a very important report on Firewise USA Community Campaign and Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1920, approving a budget amendment for public outreach, and our Public Safety Manager, Mike Dyer, will present this report. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Dyer, I'm the Public Safety Manager for the city of Calabasas. As you can see here, it's a Firewise
and adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1920, approving a budget amendment for public outreach. And our public safety manager, Mike Dyer, will present this report. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, council, city staff. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mike Dyer. I'm the public safety manager for the city of Calabasas. As you can see here, it's a Firewise community presentation for the board of, from LA County Forestry. I'm not LA County Forestry. They couldn't make it. They're actually out on fires right now. So it's me. I have a little bit of experience with forestry and fire departments. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it a go. A little bit about Firewise. It's, it's not, nothing new. It was actually started in 1986. The National Fire Protection Administration started it a long time ago. And it was based on, in 1985, a couple thousand homes burned. And what they found was homes in the wildland urban interface were a threat from burning. So Firewise Communities was started by the NFPA back in 1986. So it has, it's been around here quite some time. What it means to become a Firewise community when residents get together in their neighborhoods, they can make a huge difference all together, not one home, but all of them together. Residents can organize, stay in touch, and it gives them a sense of community. Now, the reason Firewise has become a big topic lately is there are some financial, possible financial benefits, including project funding, grant funding, and also possibly insurance, you know, reductions, possibly. So Firewise, the application is fairly easy. And you have to make a neighborhood community. The key point of Firewise is to organize communities with a prevention message. It only takes a couple of people to be on a Firewise community board. This mentions it's a good method to split the community up. You can have communities from, an ideal number is 500, but you could have smaller. You don't want to have anything really, really large because it's hard to, it's hard to do, do all of the inspections for the homes and keep them within the same framework. The committee would organize meetings and keep people informed, and then log fire prevention work through the Firewise community timekeeping sheets. First part would be to establish site boundaries, like an HOA would just be able to submit their HOA map. It says examine every home in the HOA. When you go out and do a community risk assessment, you can, you just look at the perimeter and you can look at a number of the homes within the community. This can be a single Google map with a line drawn around the community, track volunteer hours, and you can start your online application really easily, the first two pages of it. Community risk assessment. Now, I'll start with saying that you, anybody out there, the public can contact myself or Brian Cameron of Epic. This is a public-private partnership with Epic, community-driven, city-supported project. Normally, the community risk assessment would be done by the county Los Angeles Fire Department, but on August 21st and 22nd, a number of us in the community are going to take what they call a qualified entities class. We're going to be certified to do the community risk assessment for Firewise. The LA County Foresters, it says we'll conduct it, but, but we're going to have a number of people for the city of Calabasas to do it after this class we take next week. And it's not individual for homeowners. We're going to look at the communities as a whole. And some typical things we're going to be looking at are roofing materials and SOF events. The board, after we do a community risk assessment, the board or committee will, will create a three-year action plan based on the community risk assessment. An example is if you do the community risk assessment and you find that the mesh screens, because a lot of our homes have quarter inch mesh screens, they're, they're now asking that they be eighth inch because the leading cause of fire, homes burning down in, in large wildfires is actually embers going through the attic vents. And the smaller the attic vents, the better off you're going to be. You could have, embers can travel a couple miles. So even though a fire is that far away, they could travel a long ways. The annual requirements, neighbors are going to complete the educational risk reduction actions. Activities will count toward the investment. So annually, there's a, there's a number that, a dollar amount that NFPA and Firewise calculate per house is $31.80. So for every home, that's what the, the work requirement would be. Homeowners would then log what they've done, but also the HOAs, actually their landscaping costs count. So HOAs can submit the landscaping costs ahead of time, and that'll count toward the work that's being done. What we're asking for in the future, though, is we're going to do a major outreach program with Firewise. And we're also going to create a website, training for the HOAs when the outreach is done, and, and also teach them to, how to enter the, the work that they've done into the database. This is a prepared database that'll go to Firewise because there's an annual requirement for the, for the clearance to be done. So what we're asking for, this, this outreach program that we're going to do with the website and the, and the, the records, the records management system and the training for the, for the HOAs will make it very palatable and much easier for them to stay Firewise certified. And I don't want to say certified, but Firewise registered. And that's it. Can I, any questions?
Thank you so much for such a great presentation. I will turn to council comments. David?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and the hard work that went into it. I do want to notice you, you had in your slides, Brian Cameron of Epic. He is here tonight as well, so I'm sure he'll be fielding a lot of questions. How soon will the education and public outreach take place or start?
It's actually already taking place. We've been contacted by a few HOAs already to begin the process. So I'm not going to mention them, but we are, we're in process already. And what this outreach program will do will make it even easier and it'll broadcast out there and get us tied in. Again, the city is going to support the community, you know, drive to get this done. So with, with this outreach program and the website and the records management system, it's going to be unlike any, what anybody else has. And, and that's been the real rub. We only have one community that's Firewise right now in the city. And I know the impetus is, there are a lot of, lot of drive because of insurance rates and such, but this is going to be a huge, huge benefit to all of our communities beyond the insurance reductions. Our communities, if they follow these practices, are going to be much better off in the face of, could be a catastrophic wildfire season this year.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Ed, thanks, David.
Thank you, chief, for all that. Two questions. One, throughout the city, we have some communities that are mandatory HOAs, some are voluntary, and I'm not sure about other ones. Maybe there are communities that don't have either. Is there a requirement to be one or the other?
No. You can be, you can be just a few homeowners that want to be a Firewise community. You don't have to be an HOA or, or an association. You do not.
That answers my second question because then a sole resident can do it on their own.
Absolutely, with the city, and the city will help. The city is here to help.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Peter?
Yeah, I had a similar question, and I guess as a follow-up. Does it have to be a contiguous community?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
That would make sense.
Yes.
Okay. And just a.
Good question.
One other question was you mentioned that landscaping would credit towards this cost. That would obviously include brush clearance, but it doesn't include the whole landscaping bill, right?
It can. It can actually include the whole landscaping bill.
They get credit for planting flowers?
Whatever your landscaping bill.
Okay.
Now, we, we're going to encourage homeowners to do and, and, and do some work around their homes and help harden their homes. Brian and I both are going to be together, going out and, and looking at the communities together. And the idea would be to make them more hardened toward wildfire. But there are, the requirements are fairly, fairly simple right now. I'll say that.
Okay, great. And I would have to add that the eighth inch mesh, it sounds so complicated, like you've got to get in and rebuild your house, but they literally have eighth inch mesh that's already pre-cut to the size of your openings that you stick on and fold the tabs over and you're done.
Exactly.
It's just that easy. So there's no reason that we all can't step up and do that. And as long as we get the message out there that that's the number one cause of an ember fire, we should, we should protect all of Calabasas.
Thank you.
Agree.
I have a question, Peter. Well, are you talking about these vents?
Yeah, your SOF events are typically 14 and a half inches wide because studs are put 16 inches on center and they're an inch and a half wide. So they're all the same size and you can actually buy them online, pre-cut, and they, they sit right underneath your roof. And if you go to the underside of the roof and you see those screens up there, there are quarter inch wide holes. And they have new ones that have eighth inch wide holes and you just stick them on there and you're done.
I'm inviting you over.
All right.
Really, I was going to ask.
I might invite him over too.
Yeah, so, okay. A venting party for the city. Okay, James?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay. This is such a big, really such a big deal for the community. So thank you so much for taking the lead on this. I mean, it's really amazing what we're going to be able to accomplish by residents stepping forward with their neighbors to do this under the guidance of the city. So I'm very excited about this. My question is, can HOAs reach out directly to you? How do you want that line of communication?
Absolutely, myself or Brian Cameron.
Okay, and I'm going to be calling on Brian in a minute. And I, one of the questions I get from a lot of people is they want to make their house more fire safe and they'll, you know, they'll have Epic come out, they'll get the, and the analysis. But then they're like, who should do the work? They don't want to be taken advantage of. They don't know if it's, you know, a contractor and not everyone might be as handy as Peter to do these vents. I think the mayor, Pro Tem, has a new job, but.
I was going to say call Peter.
Yeah, I think so. But are there special companies that will help with these improvements? I mean, I know we can't give out like names of people, but how would you recommend people go about to making sure the work gets done properly?
Brian Cameron and I could speak to them offline.
Okay.
And there are, there are.
Great.
At resources out there. And we're just getting into this. We're going to learn more and more about other communities and what they've done. And we're, we're still, we're learning still too. And the partnership's exciting because Brian can reach people beyond us. And, and together, like, like has been said, it's a community-driven, city-supported project, so.
Well, this is a perfect time for me to call on Brian Cameron.
And mayor, if I could jump in before Brian comes in, on the contracting point, we can't, of course, recommend a single individual contractor, but we can recommend questions and strategies residents can use as select contractors. And we're taking a look at a pre-qualification process if we can take care of that and sort of develop a stable.
And I guess the question too, you know, it might not be a general contractor. There's these improvements, the vents that Peter just mentioned, but a lot of people, like myself included, wouldn't know that. And I would like to make these improvements to my home, but I would love like easy guidance, not just what the recommendations are, but the next step to get it done, so.
The consultant we're working with has a lot of great information that we're going to share with our homeowners.
Amazing.
But I think it'll include toolkits, as I understand it.
What's that?
It'll include toolkits and not physical kits, but sort of recommended first steps and.
Information kits.
That's it.
Great.
Yeah.
I will sign up. So, okay. Are the, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? I only have one card, Brian Cameron.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wiatram, Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, council members, staff. My name is Brian Cameron and resident of Calabasas. I'm also the president and co-founder of Emergency Preparedness in Calabasas. We came into existence three years ago and one of the first things we considered was a Firewise community program, just three years ago. Looking into it, we passed. We passed on it because the program was too reliant on individual homeowners to continually clear their brush, record their activities, attend education sessions, develop and execute three-year plans, knowing what I knew about myself and other Calabasas residents. It was unlikely to happen. On top of which, I looked at the NFPA website, which has the listings of all of the Firewise communities that have, are registered. And if you click on one, it pops up and every time I clicked on one, it said, no longer in compliance, dropped out, no longer in compliance. So told me something about what was going on and the recognition that we needed to do something other than just throw this out and walk away. So recently, we were introduced to a consultant who has automated most of the data collection, reporting and education components for Firewise communities. We kicked the tires and we liked it. As Mike said, he similarly evaluated the, the, it's a web, it's a web-based platform. And the way it's going to work is that the city will have kind of the general and then each community who wants to become a Firewise can sign into that with their own landing page and process. The, the website allows both HOAs and non-organized communities to become Firewise. That's very important in our city, which has an east-west kind of differentiating structure. So it's going to be important for us to spend time on the west hand, west side, where we can organize, just draw circles around groups of homes who want to become Firewise communities. Epic will be an advisor and assist any HOA or a local community who wants to pursue this and become a Firewise community, along with the city. It's, as Mike mentioned, I'm sorry, Chief Dyer, a community partnership, private public partnership. We're looking forward to working on this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for all of your work. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Could I add real quick, just getting an echo off mine, just so the council is clear on this as well. The, this is a request for funding and this is coming through a grant through the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. So we value that partnership with the Conservancy and, and appreciate the funding that comes as we are able to then help our residents in different ways.
What about, say that again? Oh, great, okay. May I have a motion to receive the report on the Firewise USA Campaign and adopt Resolution Number 2024-1920, approving a budget amendment to fund the creation of a Firewise website, promote community outreach and create a specialized data management system for Firewise compliance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
David and Ed, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Thank you so much. Our next item is designation of League of California City's voting delegates. City Clerk Hope will present the report.
Thank you, mayor and honorable council members. The League Annual Conference will be held this year, October 16th through 18th. And the General Assembly convenes in order to allow city officials to participate in Cal City's policymaking decisions. The city has the opportunity to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates of those members who are attending the conference. So it'd be appropriate to select those from you that are going that would like to participate as the delegate and alternate.
Who would like to be the voting delegate? I actually don't think that I'm able to be there for the whole time.
I would nominate James or Peter to be the voting delegate and.
Well, the thing is, I'm happy to do it, but because I'm on the board, it's sometimes harder for me to do both. So I could be the alternate, I think, Peter, if you're going to stay for the meeting.
I will be there. I'll accept the delegate.
Okay. So Peter and then James as the alternate.
And then either one of us can show up.
Perfect.
I'll be there.
And if anybody else is going, we can have a second alternate.
Yeah, we should add a second one, just in case.
Are you going to be there?
I'll be there, yes.
I would have offered to be an alternate, but I'm going to be at a bat mitzvah that weekend in New Jersey. I can't be both places, but happy to go next time.
Peter, James and David. Great, thank you. May, so may I have a motion to? Peter, James and David. Great, thank you. May, so may I have a motion to appoint a delegate and up to two alternate voting delegates?
So moved.
Ed?
Second.
And David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Our next item is adoption of Resolution Number 2024 dash nineteen twenty-one, appointing the nominees to the Office of City Council and canceling the city's general municipal election scheduled for Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, pursuant to California Elections Code Section one zero two two nine. City Clerk Pope will present this report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as of the close of the nomination period on August ninth, two thousand twenty-four, there were only two candidates to fill the two vacant seats on the city council. Um, incumbents Mayor Alicia Weintraub and Mayor Protem Kraut. Um, the city council has the opportunity pursuant to the elections code to, uh, take a couple of actions. The only one relevant in this case would be to appoint to the office the persons who have been nominated and to cancel the election. Um, if the council wishes to do so, it would be appropriate to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen twenty-one. Um, if so, these candidates would qualify and take office and serve exactly as if they had been elected at the November fifth election.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments?
Yeah, quick point of order question. Do the mayor and I vote?
Yes, you're able to vote.
Hey, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen twenty-one, appointing the nominees to the Office of City Council and canceling the city's general municipal election scheduled for Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four pursuant to Elections Code Section one zero two two nine.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And I would note also that this saves the city probably about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, I would say, or more.
James and then David. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I know Peter and I are very excited to continue serving our great community.
November fifth.
Yeah, November fifth. But just a reminder, even though we're not having a city council election, there's so many other important races on the ballot. We have school board, district attorney, and the list will go on, obviously presidential, but local. And we're gonna be having a young voters' night that is open to the entire community. So we hope everyone is just as engaged, even though we won't have our own local city council election. Now we are moving on to our public hearing. Consideration of a resolution approving files number SPR twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, DPR twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, SCP twenty twenty-four zero zero one, OTP twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight, um, VAR twenty twenty-four zero zero three and TTM twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one. A request for development of a seventy-seven acre vacant property located at forty-seven ninety Lost Virginus Road at the eastern terminus of Agora Road. APN numbers two thousand sixty-nine dash zero seven eight dash zero zero nine and twenty sixty-nine dash zero seven eight dash zero zero one. Our senior planner will present the report and community development director, Michael Klein, and city planner Bartlett are available for questions. Oh, sorry, Glenn. Yes, sorry, I didn't say your last name.
That's all right. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor, Member of the City Council. I'm always glad to be here with you. Um, this project has a, a very long history, um, but let's start by getting reintroduced to the site since it's been a while. Um, so here's a nice bird's eye view of the site itself. You can kind of see it here. Um, just a few landmarks here. We have the one-on-one freeway. Uh, we have Lost Virginus, if you're following my cursor, and then we have Agora Road that dead ends right into where the project side is on the east side of the road. And I'll fly in here, the, uh, um, approximate property boundaries, seventy-seven acre site approximately. And, uh, we have in our general plan sixteen acres that are designated for development in a triangular shape. Um, form, you can see that's kind of in a canyon bottom, uh, wider toward the street narrows as you go up the canyon and surrounded by hillside areas. The general plan designates sixty-one acres of that seventy-seven as open space currently. And I'm gonna fly in, uh, a well-known feature of this site, which is a landslide, uh, that needs to be repaired. It's about twenty-one point four acres or so. Just a, a brief history, um, again, there's, there's been many versions of this project, but the last one was a hundred eighty units. Um, that was, uh, denied by the city and declining to certify the EIR at the time. Uh, that decision was challenged in court, uh, later joined, uh, that was by the applicant, later joined by the Building Industry Association. Um, and on November twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-three, uh, the judge issued a ruling against the city and basically directed us to approve the hundred eighty unit project. So it was essentially court approved. Little bit about that project, a few more of the specifics. It was a hundred eighty units. Uh, they were multifamily units. There was basically fifteen three-story buildings, um, and clusters of twelve units each, including affordable component with eighteen affordable units in that version. There was a small commercial component of just under six thousand square feet of retail. Uh, small public park or green space of, uh, point three six acres, uh, two detention basins, and if you follow my cursor, um, the, the relocated one. And there's an, uh, an existing detention basin you can't see on here because of where the development is, but it was adjacent to the colony. That one was relocated, proposed to be relocated to the east. Um, and then there's a smaller detention basin that was going to be collecting some water and debris off of the northern slopes. And I'll point out a third, the exist, already existing detention basin that was to remain untouched, also adjacent to the colony to the south. Um, that project, version of the project included a, a dedication of a public trail. Um, the footprint for that was essentially a little over eleven acres. Um, and therefore preserving at the end sixty-six acres. So would have added about five extra acres to what the general plan already designated as open space and included a landslide repair, as we mentioned the landslide earlier. And again, if you follow my cursor, that's the approximate area of the landslide. Um, also included a point eight acre roadway dedication, which is just down here at the bottom. You can barely see the sliver. Sorry about the scale on that. So fast forwarding till, uh, January of this year, um, the New Home Company, the Building Industry Association and the city all came together and agreed on a settlement for a reduced density project of up to seventy-six units in a single-family configuration. Um, shortly thereafter, per the settlement agreement, on January tenth, the city uh, certified the amended final environmental impact report for that project. And then again, per the settlement agreement, um, after designing a new project, those applications and plans were submitted to the city on May fourteenth. Um, and then again, that was for a reduced density project of seventy detached, single-family homes. Uh, those applications were deemed complete on June seventh of, uh, this year. So a little bit about the revised project that we're looking at tonight. Um, as I mentioned, there's single, seventy single-family detached units. Uh, you might hear, uh, condominiums or single-family homes. They are single-family homes in a condominium arrangement. Uh, they're designed to be two stories and the development footprint in this version is twelve point four or five acres. Um, you can see that development footprint is a little bit larger than, than what was there before. And I'll go a little bit into why that is. Um, a couple of things happened with this new configuration. One is the development was pulled out of the canyon uh, to the west. So the easternmost edge of it was kind of pulled to the west a little bit. And, um, the applicant had informed us that was to preserve, uh, some seeps, the natural seeps that were over here and some associated biological habitat, some wetland areas. Um, so they wanted to preserve those. Um, and then another concerted effort was made uh, to pull the development away from the colony, um, which is a community just down here to the west. Um, and so the original development footprint got compressed a little bit. Um, and it expanded, uh, in a wider variety. So, so the footprints essentially similar to the, the old project, but, uh, it did expand a little bit to the south in the area right around where my cursor is. Um, a couple of other things happened too, just a change in product from a multifamily uh, product to a single-family product, kind of that's, uh, a, a, and the single family is shorter in height versus a taller multifamily product that was, you know, the twelve units in a thirty-five foot high building down to single-family, um, that are a little bit more spread out space in between. All of that kind of came together to produce a little bit bigger of, of a footprint in here. So you, you, you push down and, and separate out a little bit and it has to get a little wider. Um, that expansion was in an area down here. Again, that was already kind of disturbed. It has the existing detention basin and the, uh, the, the inspection of the site and is detailed in the environmental impact report um, did, did detail that the disturbed areas of this site were in the western portion. So, uh, seemed like a reasonable area for that. As I mentioned earlier, with the other version, this part didn't change. They're relocating a, um, detention basin from near Shea Homes to the eastern portion of the site, um, circled here in blue. And then the secondary debris basin is still, um, proposed for the northern slopes. And then the existing, uh, third debris basin i- is still will remain untouched by this revised project. In purple outline here is the landslide remediation. I pointed that out earlier. Um, that's still a necessary part of this application. It didn't change that much, except for what I've already mentioned about the, the slight change in grading limits to preserve the seat. Sixty-three point eight three acres will, will be permanent open space in this version, a little bit less than the, than the last one. Um, dedication of a public trail is, um, it, it remains as part of this application as well. And the roadway dedication will also remain the same. And then lastly, the project access didn't change. Circulation system internally changed a bit um, because of a different configuration, but the two main access points will remain the same. Uh, the main being at the intersection of Gore Road and Lost Virginus. And then the secondary one, which is emergency only and gated, will be about three hundred feet north of that. So I did, uh, include a comparison table in your staff report. And I'll get a little bit into those right now. Um, again, you know, the, the original versus revised project here went from a hundred eighty units down to se- seventy units, um, and a multifamily product down to a single-family product. Uh, I already mentioned the footprint, uh, expanded slightly from eleven to twelve point four or five acres. The total disturbance area went up slightly. Um, the permanent space, as I already mentioned, went down just a little bit. Um, the building height went from thirty-five to twenty-six to about twenty-nine feet, three inches, or about thirty feet. And again, three stories down to two. The retaining wall heights, uh, were maximum fifteen feet in the original project. And this, this, uh, version has maximum heights of eleven feet for those retaining walls. I'll also note that those retaining walls, um, in the original, as for the new, were both um, basically set behind the majority of the development. Um, so partially screened by the development. So that aspect was fairly similar. Um, and I mentioned that the prod, project, the revised project is pulling away from the colony for, by about thirty-six feet. So it's setback further from that community. Oak tree removals went down from forty-five to thirty-nine. Um, a lot of that was largely due to the Woolsey Fire and, uh, different, different kind of configuration of oak trees, essentially. Some, some didn't make it and there were some new ones that kind of grew up um, to be protected via ordinance. And then, uh, just generally, the traffic, uh, went down significantly and that was because of the reduced, uh, unit count. And especially the removal of a commercial component from the project itself. So here's a little compa- comparison of the elevations. The hundred eighty unit project, you can notice on the top photo or the top rendering, I should say, is, is taller and it's a bigger building. Um, the seventy-unit project, as you can see on the bottom, bottom rendering is uh, shorter, it's separated out. You get about three single-family units that occupy about the same amount of space as the, uh, previous multifamily, uh, unit buildings. Um, and you'll notice, uh, obviously with a single-family product, the ability to separate them out a little bit. Um, and a, and opportunities to plant landscaping around and have yard areas within them. And also point out while I'm on this slide, that the architecture is, is fairly similar to uh, the hundred eighty unit version, although, um, I think the, with the single-family homes, you have an opportunity to articulate a little bit more. And, uh, you can see there's different architectural varieties, um, different roof styles and um, colorations to what was, what's been proposed. And then, uh, as I mentioned, that the height went down, so the, the larger buildings for the multifamily were up to the maximum allowed by code, which is thirty-five feet. And the single-family product, uh, ranged in size. In this photograph, uh, the tallest building here pictured is twenty-seven feet, eleven inches. Here's, uh, some renderings that were submitted by the applicant and this is from Luna Court, the, um, the cul-de-sac street that's in the colony development and a little bit about what they're gonna be seeing and just a few things I can point out here. Uh, the top photograph is the quarter-proofed project. And again, as I keep mentioning, it's a larger building and taller. And this was actually closer to the community, so it has a little bit more of a presence uh, than the, uh, rendering on the south, on the, on the south and the bottom, um, which shows the single-family configuration. You can see the separation of the houses and uh, further, but set further back from the colony and that allows a little bit more opportunity for landscaping, not just in between the homes, but between the colony development and the project. This development has three requested variances. Um, I will mention that the variance one here for building height and the variance two here for retaining wall height, uh, match, uh, requests for the hundred eighty unit version of the project. Um, the hundred eighty unit version of the project was proposing affordable units and therefore qualified for the state density bonus law, and that allowed them to request concessions for, for those standards. Uh, the third variance on here, the distance between buildings, code requires twenty feet. Uh, the, the request is to reduce that to ten. And, um, that was in an effort to not have to spread the footprint out over a larger area. So, um, again, uh, uh, trying to save a little bit of space and, and, you know, you're working with a pretty confined site. And so expansion would involve more grading, more retaining walls, uh, more visual impact, things of that nature. So that's the, that's the reason for that request. Uh, spoken a little bit about the biology of the site, um, but I do want to mention again that uh, where this red circle is, um, was there effort to pull away from the seeps? Um, again, you know, that, that's what kind of condensed the project site, uh, from east to west. Um, another benefit of condensing the project is this was an identified wildlife corridor. And, um, the project will now not encroach as far into the wildlife corridor and, uh, preserving these natural seeps, um, actually provides a little bit of a benefit from a biological standpoint, because it leaves a few of the water sources available for, for the, uh, the critters that, that go through there. Little bit about traffic improvements and, uh, traffic and roadway improvements. The project's main entrance is right here at the, at the intersection of Agora Road and Lost Virginus. I mentioned already, there's a secondary emergency only access approximately three hundred feet to the north. They are proposing to extend the bicycle lane through the Agora, Lost Virginus intersection. And then there will be a sidewalk extension north of there from, from the intersection north. And the third added northbound traffic lane remains as was in the original project. And that will add additional roadway capacity to the north between there and the freeway. And basically you put a lot of this together and you have a reduction in the unit count along with an attic traffic lane. And that's going to equal basically better traffic flow and better situation in case of the need to evacuate. So just a little bit about CEQA. As I mentioned, the EIR was originally certified by the council on January 10th, 2024. Along with the project application materials, the applicant submitted a CEQA checklist that we peer reviewed documenting basically that all the environmental impacts for a downscaled version of the project, as we can anticipate, those projects are either the same or less than the original, less density, less traffic, less impact. And therefore the revised project falls within the scope of the already certified amended final impact report. And all the mitigation measures that were in that original EIR will remain true and apply to this revised project. So our recommendation is that you all consider adopting the city count, the, the resolution that we prepared for you to approve the, the reduced scope project at 70 units. And for the following broader reasons that the project is less, less impacted in the original project, it's consistent with the terms of the settlement agreement and complies with CEQA. We have two requested changes by the applicant to the resolution. Condition number 36, and I believe I, we submitted this slide to you ahead of time. So you can read through and have him strike out an underlying version, what the requested changes are. In a nutshell, the open space is required to be dedicated in perpetuity either way. Originally, the language said it was to be offered to a regulatory agency to manage. And this just changes that, the only component of this, this would change is that there could be a combination of management of that open space by both the, the regulatory agency, whoever would accept that and maintain that, and also an HOA and/or LMD, because there's kind of mixed components in that open space area, landscaping and, and maintenance of drainage features and things of that nature. Request number two, sorry, the verbiage was too much to put on the slide, but on page 56 and 57, condition number 70 is, is requested that we strike that condition. The gist of that condition was in the original project, we had suggested a condition for creation of additional water sources, such like a game guzzler in some of the open space areas. And the consideration here would be that, that the project has actually saved a few of the natural water features that were going to initially be removed. So that would be the consideration in whether or not you want to strike that condition. So that ends my portion of the presentation. I believe our city attorney is going to say a few words. And then afterwards, I know we have a whole applicant team here available for questions and comment. And including, I think, and for the benefit of our, of our city clerk, I think there's at least one member of your team that would be maybe joining us remotely, right?
Glenn, can you go back to the presentation?
Which slide?
To this one. So condition of approval 70.
Yeah. Condition set number 70 on, it's kind of straddles page 56 and 57.
So this is about the applicant.
Condition number 70.
Can you summarize it for members of the public?
Yes, absolutely.
And council?
Condition number 70 requires the applicant to install a wildlife water source, which is commonly a game guzzler or another sort of, imagine a water fountain, but for wildlife. That's what condition number 70 requires to be installed. And the request of the applicant is to remove that condition because that was intended to mitigate for the loss of the seep area that is now not being removed by the landslide. With the adjustment of the landslide remediation boundary, the seep isn't being removed and therefore replacing it with an artificial water source isn't necessary. So that's the basis of condition 70 and staff concurs with that, but it is up to the council, of course. And if I could continue while I have the mic. So just to summarize on condition 36, to make it very clear, all 63.83 acres of open space will be preserved and protected through a, a appropriate recorded conservation easement or restrictions in HOA CCNRs. The request is to shift it from requiring also that all of it be managed by a qualified state or local nonprofit, to instead require only that the mitigation area be managed by a state or local nonprofit, which could be the conservancy, but we haven't yet secured agreement by them or similar nonprofits. The remaining portion of the 64 acres would be managed by an LMD or by an HOA or another combination of agencies ensuring its protection. So the idea is to ensure that, because the conservancy is unlikely to accept all of the open space, we want to get as much as we can get accepted. If it's the mitigation area, accept it and run with the conservancy and the rest would be the HOA's responsibility or the LMD, but always bound and protected against a future development by that de-destruction as recorded. And then last, on the legal side, as the council and the community is aware, this project of 70 units stems from the settlement agreement approved in January. The settlement agreement provides for the city to consider a 70 unit project, and that is up to 76. So here they've cut it from 76 to 70. If the city council chooses, approve the 70 unit project, they'll go forth and build it. If the city council declines to approve the 70 unit project, then we are back to the other requirements of settlement agreement, which are the 180 unit multifamily project springs back to life. And we have waived the ability to appeal the court's original imposition of the 180 unit project upon us as part of the settlement agreement. We expect the applicant will then seek to enforce the rest of the settlement agreement, which includes attorney's fees, potential penalties if approved by the court, and it will revive their takings challenge, which was set aside in the settlement agreement. So the choice before the council is approve this 70 unit proposed project or accept the consequences in the settlement agreement as agreed to in January, which include the 180 unit project. The applicant, I believe, has a whole suite of consultants. And my suggestion, Madam Mayor, would be to give the applicant a moment to just let you know who they have available for questions, then council questions, public comment and action as desired.
I'm going to take, I'm going to call for a break till 8:30.
Sure.
And then we can resume.
Thank you.
Now we are back and we are going to continue. The public hearing is open. Matt, are we going to start? Should I start with council questions?
Yeah. What are your council questions? And as I noted, there's a number of, on the city side and the applicant side, consultants, engineers, et cetera. But yeah, council questions and public comment.
Perfect. We're going to start with council questions. I will start with council member Bazagian.
To our city attorney, I'm assuming that under their requests that they've made under applicant requests, that the open space requirement of protection in perpetuity would mean that the, it would not only be protected under the open space initiative, but also separately under this contractual arrangement?
Correct.
So it's double protection.
And that's the intention.
Under an arrangement like this, could a future council undo the contract? I'm just, I think, I think the answer is probably yes, even though it's unrealistic.
State law protects conservation easements under current state law. I have no crystal ball to prevent the state laws ever changing, but generally current, current state law protects conservation easements. So once agreed upon between the two parties, the city and the developer, it would be, I can't envision a scenario that it would change, but I can't guarantee forever.
Okay. Well, whatever, whatever written instrument, language is strongest would be appreciated in this thing.
Oh, agreed. If it requires, it requires the city to approve the form of all of those requirements, including the full HOA CCNR. So there's not, we're not required to accept their form. We will be writing it robust.
Okay. And if it requires reference to another instrument or other statutes under state law or cases, and it should do that too. The LMD, I guess this is to the applicant, because I don't think the city can answer this question, the appropriate representative, the request to, to place the remaining land under an LMD agreement or an HOA agreement. Are you speaking of creating a separate LMD? I'm assuming not annexing it to another LMD. Is that correct?
I'll start with that. The expectation is, as they come up to the microphone, the expectation is that they will either form a new LMD or be a new zone of an annex into an existing LMD as a new zone, separate from any other funding. We haven't worked out the mechanics of that yet, but that's the expectation. They're not going to be joined together with some other HOA.
No, I know that, but I'm more concerned about joining with another LMD. I just wanted to know if it do, if they do choose the LMD route, so it's going to be either or.
Correct.
Okay. And then these 70, uh, single family residences, are they still technically like a, are they detached townhouses? Is that what we're talking about in terms of illegal status?
It's the same setup as the colony. So they're detached homes, four walls and a roof separate, but legally they're condominiums. So you own the airspace in your four walls and a roof. And then you own a common interest in the roads and the other HOA owned properties. So legally condominiums, but physically single family homes.
Okay. Those were my only questions. Thank you.
Peter?
I had two questions on the applicant request. The first one is on condition of approval number 36. Were asked to add the words solely with respect to the area of open space that satisfies the resource agency mitigation requirements. Could you explain in plain language, what would satisfy the resource agency mitigation requirements and who makes that determination?
The city will make the determination. And I don't know if we have the acreage mapped on that, but in plain language, it's going to be the portions of the open space that are part of the mitigation for oak trees, the wildlife quarter, any other mitigation requirements. I just don't know if we have it mapped precisely. And I'm looking at staff to confirm that last point.
We don't have them mapped precisely at this location, but that will also be done in concert with other resource agencies such as California Fish and Wildlife that claim jurisdiction over certain areas and require mitigation. So there might be other mitigations on the property as well. Right? So we're losing a little bit of wetland area. There's an upland restoration of where the landslide repair is that will be re-wooded with oak trees and other upland type species. And so I think when this is all over, we're going to be asking as a part of the mitigation of the environmental impact report, a plan that identifies different areas where mitigation has to go, where it can go. Some of the mechanics of that's going to have to be worked out, right? Because there's all sorts of native natural land in there, maybe suitable for wetland mitigation onsite, may not be. A biologist is going to have to determine that. We're going to have to peer review that, make sure it, it's, it's functional and it can work. And then at the end, they'll either mitigate or what they can't mitigate onsite. There's also an opportunity to submit a fee into a mitigation bank where they can preserve land elsewhere as an option, but option one is onsite.
Okay. I, I guess I'm a little slow on this. I just, I, I'm not quite following. Let's try to be a little more specific. The area that's being remediation of the landslide, will that be part of the land that would be managed by a qualified state or local conservation organization? Or is that the type of land that they won't take?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure if I can answer that question. In, in theory, it's a restoration that we're going to have to approve. The maintenance of that, I guess, could be either. And maybe I'll defer the city attorney as that possibility. An HOA could maintain that. I, I'd rather not, right? For an HOA to do it, rather, rather a resource agency, but a resource agency also has to take the responsibility for it as well.
Our preference would be to convince the conservancy or similar to take it, to take over ownership and maintenance of the landslide area. The question is if we can't convince them, then it'll fall to the HOA.
Okay. But that first option would be to us to determine what this area is and then see if the conservancy would take it. Because there's going to be considerable maintenance on these drainage ditches to keep them free of debris, et cetera.
Yeah, there'll be a fair amount of annual and is needed maintenance on those.
Okay. And then the debris basins, are those going to stay under the control of the HOA?
The applicant said they can better address that when, when the appropriate time is.
Okay. I'll, I'll come back to that question at that time then.
Okay.
In regards to item number 70, the language in here says it's to mitigate for the loss of portions of the ephemeral drainage and any natural seeps, which will be eliminated by the project development. I understand from our packet, having read it, that there's a portion of the original plan that would have taken out some yurba manza, salt grass and seeps.
That's correct.
Is no longer there. Are there any other portions of the ephemeral drainage and natural seeps that are still impacted by the project?
That's correct. Yeah. The ephemeral drainage runs all the way through the canyon, through the middle of the site, all the way to where the existing detention basin is.
Okay.
And so portions of the ephemeral drainage are going to go away no matter what. What the EIR did is make sure there's built in mitigation at at least a one to one, if not more by a resource agency to replace that as mitigation. Condition 70, when we were originally going through this project, was a belts and suspenders condition to, especially the fact that an ephemeral drainage only has water in it certain times of the year. So it's only a water source certain times of the year. The natural seeps are, they were listed as, as more or less perennial. And so there's a constant water source. So we viewed at the time, losing the, the natural seeps as more of a trigger to, to have to provide a water source than perhaps right now. The, the, the question's still up to you guys, of course, because they are losing a little bit of the ephemeral drainage, but there's perhaps less than needed at. And plus, you know, there's, there are thinking that about this a little bit more. There are some maintenance issues. We had a development, the, the oaks development that had a quote unquote game guzzler installed and the maintenance went, went bye-bye. It, it's not working anymore. So there could be some maintenance issues for, for creating that. So, but, but I guess in the end, we're a little bit worried about how strong the nexus is, but you know, for requiring that versus, versus not. I think there's still a weak nexus there for doing it. But again, you're keeping a, a perennial water source now where you weren't before.
All right. Thank you.
David?
Okay. Mine have already been touched on. The only thing I'm confirming, just to confirm with staff and our city managers, that there was no need, that there's no opposition, no need for the game guzzler, as it's referred to in the documents here on 70, the change in 70. I just want to confirm that I hadn't heard from staff or city manager on that item.
I'm sorry. The question is that it, it doesn't relate to the change in density.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking the, the change in the request on item number, approval number 70, as in your report. And you refer to it in the report as a game guzzler, I believe. I could have that name wrong. I just want to confirm our staff and our city managers support that there is no issue. I heard from our city attorney, I'm just double checking.
Yeah, we're supportive of the same. Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's it. As far as questions go for me now, they've already been asked.
Ed?
Thank you. Good questions. Mine's actually a little bit different. Most of us all know what that property looks like, different times of the year. And when it's rainy season, it can be pretty nasty and the concern of the it can be pretty nasty, and the concern of the hillside coming down. Who is going to mitigate that? Whose responsibility would that be if there's hillside repairs that need to be made?
I believe you're talking about the landslide repair area, correct? So the plan right now, based on the geotectical engineering, is to, is to do quite a bit of grading to stabilize that entire hillside. So hopefully, and I've seen several in 25 years of doing this, repairs, and most of them worked very well and haven't moved and have been stabilized permanently. And that's the intent here. So hopefully that doesn't happen. But any sloughing or sliding on property would be the applicant or resulting homeowners association in this, this regard would be, I believe, right? Responsible for repairing that.
Or any other landowner who ends up owning that piece of land, which may be one of the challenges in getting the conservancy to take part of it, is they won't want to bear potential liability. Though in the end, it'll be the applicant and the landowner who owns the land where the slide fell, if there's a future slide. So if that's the HOA, it's the HOA. If it's the qualified nonprofit who takes over that part of the land, and they didn't maintain it, then it'd be that qualified nonprofit. We would pursue the applicant as well under the conditions, but depending on when this happens, if it's far in the future, the applicant's gone. So then it's the homeowners who have to bear it as part of the HOA, plus whatever qualified nonprofit owns that land.
Right, because my concern was the liability of the city.
Yeah, as a city, we should not be held liable for land we don't own.
Okay. My other questions have been asked and answered. Thank you.
Great. I have a few questions, and they will be, most, some will be for the, some will be for the applicant to answer. But for staff, when did the applicant ask for the changes in the conditions of approval?
Monday.
And I'm a bit fixated on condition of approval number 36. How would the HOA have the money to do this maintenance? I guess that's a question for the applicant. And I don't underst, I can't really see a resource agency, or I can't see an agency taking on this property. So I'm curious how the HOA would be, have the funding to maintain that. I was curious what the dues would be for the HOA. I was like trying to understand that. That's another question. I was curious, and this is another question when the applicant comes up. In this day and age, how does fire insurance work when you're selling a project, when you're building a project like this? And then my other question when the applicant comes up is what mechanisms are in place to mediate construction impacts to the colony? So those will be my questions. And the schools. Okay, let's see. I think now we can move to comments from members of the public that are wishing to speak on this item. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, if you could fill out a speaker card and hand it to our city clerk. At this time, I only have one card from the applicant, and if there's more than one person from the applicant's team who would like to speak, if they can each individually fill out a card. So right now I have one from Michael, and please help me with your last name when you come up on. I don't want to mess it up.
Good evening, Mayor Weintraub, Mayor Protem Kraut, council members, staff, and some of our neighbors. My name is Michael Bataglia. I'm the division president of New Home Company for Southern California. Thanks, Glenn, for a very thorough presentation tonight. We do have a complete group of our technical consultants with us, and they're available also to support anything we talk about. And we appreciate the efforts that you guys are looking at tonight and going to take action on. So let me just see if I can, I've got a whole bunch of notes from questions that came up. One of which was the HOA and how they fund this, if they're the ones that own and maintain it. So we go through a rigorous process with the Department of Real Estate on preparing a budget. And so they will, we will have all the territory and areas and the maintenance costs and obligation for that, and reserve funding for future issues that could come up in a, in a maintenance area like that. Now, as far as insurance.
Or I guess if you can go back, I was curious, if there's only 70 homes, like what would HOA, what would HOA's dues be approximately if you're going to have to include? I mean, I know that's not in our purview, but I'm trying to understand, like, the reality of what the situation would be on future homeowners in our country.
Sure, we have not run any HOA budgets yet. As we go through this process, that's one of the things that we will be doing. They don't have pools. They don't have big common areas other than the slope. So they'll be maintaining some of the streets and common areas out there, and front yard landscaping will be a portion of that. So as we get further, when we do the HOA documents, that will all be a part of the process that we go through with the city and with the Department of Real Estate. So I don't have a number on, on where it would be right now, but it would be, you know, a multiple of a few hundred dollars a month.
Mayor, if I can real quickly just do a point of order, I think you requested that the applicant come up for public comment, which would do three minutes. But I also feel like this, the council is requesting an opportunity for questions. So if, if so, at the desire of the council, I think we would suspend the three-minute rule, and this would then go into the questions.
Yes.
Okay. As far as fire insurance, obviously, that's an issue that we're all facing statewide. One of the things we've completed is a fire master plan. So we also have areas of landscape thinning, reduction, watered areas, so that there's protected space up against the homes. And all the homes will be tile roofs, closed-in eaves. So we've, we've protected the homes as well. And then fire insurance, we're able to get still, and I know the California Fair Plan is still an option, but people are still issuing fire insurance.
In Calabasas, it's very, very difficult.
Yeah, and we understand that, but we're doing all the things to mitigate for that so that people are able to get it.
Just for the record, it's very difficult, and people should be aware of that. Okay.
Let's see, number 36. Let's, let's go back to number 36. The part where it's solely with respect to the area of open space that satisfies resource agency mitigation. This is primarily related to the seep only, right? So oak trees are not a part of this. When we go to the resource agencies, we do have a portion of the stream that we are taking out that runs down towards Los Virginas. But the upper portion will have the right to mitigate based on what the resource agencies require. So strictly related to the seep. And, you know, this is, this is also why it is better to put a landscape maintenance district into a landscape maintenance district or the homeowners association to maintain it. Most conservancies won't take anything where a landslide's been mitigated either. So that's why we have those two options. I think I got most of them. Construction impacts. So what we do is, we're, we're regulated by a number of agencies, one of which is AQMD, and then we have Regional Water Quality Control Board. So we will be protecting the perimeters of the property from any water runoff. Also, dust control happens during our grading operations. We have water trucks that are going through all the time to keep the dust from becoming airborne, because that becomes a violation of AQMD. So we're going to do everything we can to protect the neighborhoods.
I can actually add a little bit to that, too. The EIR requires sound attenuation wall, temporary sound attenuation wall between this development and the colony to protect against noise impacts. And then we have a need for haul, haul route permits, any, anything that needs to come in or out of the site via trucks and traffic control mitigation plans, all, all in place through mitigation to help protect that community.
Is the construction hours after school, after school start and like not during school pickup time?
I believe during the week was seven to seven.
So that would be the worst time, the 7:00 AM with the schools.
Or seven to five. Let me double check that.
Right, don't we prevent construction during the drop-off and pickup hours?
For city projects, we haven't extended that to all private projects in the city. We've made that a condition on city projects. Certainly, I think we could take a look at making that a condition. The only question I would want to pose is what does that do to the total length of construction? You limit it for shorter hours per day. It's more days. I don't know what that math would be.
And it's just Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
It's seven AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Saturday, no Sundays, no holidays.
And that's in condition 40 on page.
Condition 40, correct. Page 51. Right, and, and, you know, we'll ask for a staging plan where they, where they tell us where they, where the construction workers are going to park, where they're going to store materials. You can't stack trucks. They can't be out on the street. They can't be in the way, essentially.
So everything would be on the project site?
Correct.
All self-contained. Let me go back to, can I go back to also the LMD discussion one more time? Just to make sure, I mean, if we annex into an LMD, these homeowners will be paying into that LMD. Or if we create a new one, it's, it's on the homeowners to fund that LMD as part of their property taxes.
Who has additional questions for the applicant? Peter?
You have on here, managed by a landscape maintenance district, homeowners association, or combination thereof. Why not one or the other? Is there a particular benefit to?
No, we just want the flexibility of which one is the best one to take it. So LMD would probably be the first choice, and then we'd also go to the homeowners association. There may be a combination thereof, too, based on the territory.
And Mayor Protem, if I could add to that, most of our LMDs that do overlap with an HOA, it is split, where some of the landscaping cost or brush clearance costs or tree trimming costs are covered by the HOA, which are not part of the property tax assessments or the LMD. So that's very common.
Okay. And I was hoping for a clarification earlier. We deferred the question to you. Can you give us in plain language what area you expect to be managed by a conservation organization or nonprofit?
Well, what I just said about the conservation, the conservancy is not going to want to take a landslide area. So that would probably go into an LMD or the homeowners association. The rest of the property would be a perfect candidate for a conservancy.
Okay, so the, the hillside's there to the north?
Correct.
And how about the trail and its easement? It looks like it runs through the landslide mitigation?
The trail stays on the north side of the property, so that's not in landslide mitigation area.
Okay. And then the trail continues on down to the road on the north side of the property? Would, would all of that likely go to this?
Likely. I think we also have the trail in the homeowners association maintenance as well.
Okay. And then somebody mentioned a sound wall between this and the
Yeah, Glenn, you want to talk about?
Colony, but I have not seen one on the plan.
Well, yeah, well, well, it's a mitigation in the environmental impact report that is required. So they're going to have to show us where that's going to be and what the construction of that is. And it's supposed to reduce the decibels by a minimum of 15 decibels in between the construction and the neighboring community.
And that's just a temporary sound wall during construction?
That's correct. We've done that with the Yvonti development. They had to do one because there was some neighboring offices with, you know, professionals that worked in there, and they were concerned about the same thing. And actually, we got a very positive response from that, from them, so.
I think that's great. I, I just want to ensure that that's a temporary sound wall, because the benefit of the setback of the homes and the roadway or the driveway between the colony and the new homes is a benefit to the colony residents, and I don't want to interrupt that with a, a permanent wall there.
Correct, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
David, you're good. Ed, anything further?
Extra questions?
Do you have any?
Yeah, I do have one. And that is the amount of soil that's going to be moved. Is it going to, the amount of soil that's going to be moved, is it staying on site or is it going out somewhere? And then if it is going out, where is it going and how many trucks are taking it there? Because it's a big project that's going to be manhandling Los Virginas for a while, trucks going back and forth.
It is a complicated scheme, although the plan is that it's going to balance on site, and there will be no import or export of soil, period.
Great. That's the best of both. Thank you.
James, do you have any further questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, I have, if there are not any further council questions, I have two more speaker cards. I'm Joe Chukel.
Hi, good evening. I am Joe Chilko. I'm a longtime Calabasas resident. We've spent a lot of time fighting this particular project, and we've gotten to the point where we are now. And you shouldn't take the fact that a lot of people haven't shown up tonight as an indication that people aren't interested. They are still interested. We realize what the situation is. And it's the devil's in the details. I hear a lot of things being discussed. I hear a lot of, yeah, we're going to deal with that. Yeah, we haven't worked that out yet. So the public is certainly going to want to hear about these things as they progress, as far as that goes. I have the same concerns you have about giving all the responsibility to an HOA. HOAs can go bankrupt, just like everybody else. And if it does, and there's a landslide, and one of the ways to cause a landslide is to start removing things at the toe. Now, we know that there are geological approaches to it that will try to avoid that, and you're right. That's what everybody's going to hope for. But if things go really bad, there could be a big bill here. And I haven't heard any discussion of a completion bond. This is going to be an expensive project, definitely. And money isn't cheap lately. So I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, it's four or five years down the road and something happens that causes it not to get completed. So I'm very concerned that that aspect is missing from the settlement agreement, and it hasn't been brought up yet. And as far as the people from the colony go, I know that they're going to, you know, of course, they're not going to export dirt, but we know the wind blows, and it is going to be a problem in that. And the experience in Paxton was, a lot of the people in Stone Creek have damage to their house as a result of the construction work that was going on, pounding. So there's going to be a lot of movement. There is possibly going to be some concerns for people in the colony, and there might be some damages there. So how are they going to be made good, or how do they deal with those things if those things happen? And thanks very much. I think in general, we want you, want to leave you to do your job. You're doing pretty good. And I think the fact that we've got two members of the city council who are going on without being opposed is an indication that maybe the city thinks, or the residents think you're doing a good job. So keep it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Our last public speaker is Meek Carver.
Hello, I'm the general counsel of the New Home Company, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of items from Mike, that Michael Bataglia was talking about with the LMD and the HOA. So I handed my card. I think we ended up getting there, but thank you for, for hearing me. I just wanted to, one item I wanted to clarify is that the, a conservancy or some similar nonprofit group would be likely to take on the, kind of the seep areas that we talked about and natural drainage areas. Most likely, the other areas would be, continue to be owned by the HOA. And in certain circumstances, the LMD would probably be the best way to ensure that these areas were maintained properly, but ultimately funded by the future residents, in either case, regardless of who is ultimately maintaining it. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think we've gotten there now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. If there are not any additional members of the public wishing to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up to council deliberations. Do any of my council colleagues have any further comments? Peter? Oh, David. No, no.
I have a few, so bear with me here. You know, first of all, for the members of the public, as you know, with, this is a, a project that we have opposed. We did lose in court. We lost in court. And, and considered an appeal, but that would be costly and uncertain, and the risk versus reward led us to the settlement agreement that you have in front of you. led us to the settlement agreement that you have in front of you. It's sad that the state law, uh, granted things like the variances, uh, for the multifamily homes that were approved. And they're carrying through to the single family homes that I believe were the desire to be built all along. I do appreciate the, uh, the driveway and the setback from the colony, um, the lower height, um, and, uh, and I do, uh, do appreciate that in the plan. I think that's a, that's a boon to our residents there. Um, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in some aspects of the staff report and I, and I do just have to share this. You know, the, uh, the fact that the project moved closer to the detention basin at the colony wasn't even mentioned until I brought it up. The, uh, the comment about preserving seeps and yerba manza and alkali salt grass, I, I find very insincere. Uh, we've been discussing this project for years and, uh, this is the very first mention I've seen uh, from the applicant, uh, that is even leaning towards environmental stewardship. And, uh, and I was wondering what it was all about until we got here and saw that he's requesting to, uh, delete item seventy in its entirety. So, so I'm opposed to that. First of all, the, the redo of the footprint that we have in front of us, I do not believe was done to preserve yerba manza and salt grass. I believe it was done in the trade-off for the additional building closer to the, uh, colony where we see the project growing a little bit to the south. Um, in addition, uh, number seventy, the condition was put in there specifically to mitigate loss of the ephemeral stream and protect the seeps. And as was already stated, those are not gone entirely. They've just been reduced. There's, there's less impact, but there is still impact. Uh, so I'm going to encourage my fellow council members to stay with me and keep item number seventy in the conditions of approval. Another thing in the, the, the uh, uh, staff report that was a, a little insincere was, again, when we, when we have photos comparing one project and another, like we showed for the view from the colony at the cul-de-sac, it's important that they're taken as the same photos. Um, the one from the, the previously approved project was taken with a standard lens. And the one for the revised project was taken with a wide-angle perspective. It's really tough for us council members to make those comparisons looking at these slides, um, when the two don't match up. And we've seen that a few times here before. Uh, nevertheless, uh, I am inclined uh, to hold to our settlement agreement and approve this project. I, as I have stated, I am not supportive of deleting item number seventy. And with regards to thirty-six, I do understand that there are going to be portions of the land that will not be taken over by a conservancy, but I'm uncomfortable with the proposed language. So I would like to propose an alternate language here that would accomplish much of what we're looking for, for your consideration. The red line solely with respect to the area of open space that satisfies the resource agency mitigation requirements, I would not approve that. Instead, I would suggest that it says, "We shall require management by a qualified state or local conservation organization or nonprofit." And I suggest we insert the words "to the maximum extent practical as determined solely by the city." The next red line portion reads, "The remaining portion of the sixty-three point eight-three acres of open space." I would scratch the next word and just keep, "shall be maintained by a landscape maintenance district." Scratching out the words "that is not required for resource agency mitigation" and scratching out the words "homeowners association or combination thereof." With that language, the staff and the applicant can work to find a conservation agency that'll be a steward for the land and take good care of the maximum amount of land possible, uh, while still leaving them the flexibility to take the rest to a landscape maintenance district. That would be my recommendation and that's all of my comments.
Thank you, David. Oh, I'll come back. Ed?
Good comments, Mayor Protem. Well, it's getting to the closing moments here and the, the property, uh, that we're talking about is really, a serious contender for probably the most dramatic hillside overlooking our city. Obviously, we wanted to protect the hillsides and we went to a variety of levels to do that. And we were resolved to do so. We actually went into extra innings to get that done. Uh, but I'm glad the New Home approached the city to discuss the settlement. Glad to be able to strike a balance together. And the comparison matrix, uh, is a major improvement. I like and satisfied with the settlement terms, uh, the reduced project size, revised site plan. I like the architecture. It's in keeping with our city's natural beauty of earthly colors and surrounding. Uh, the adjustments to grading boundaries sensitive to geological, sensitive to the marsh and the meadow habitat. I also like the extra emergency, uh, road because there was going to be an emergency, most likely at some point, hopefully not soon. And, uh, it's a safety, good safety, um, circulation element. I think most of the other items, uh, have been mentioned, um, with the adjustments and support council, uh, Protem, on that item. And, uh, hopefully we'll get this done tonight. Thank you.
James?
I don't have any comments.
David?
Um, number of comments were, were here, um, tonight. This is not the first time, not the second, not the third. I, I, I don't know how many times we have been dealing with this, not this particular item of, of the, uh, settlement document and the resolution, but certainly this property. And it's something that has been really important, not just to the council and prior council, but also to our community and new homes as well. So, um, it's, uh, I can say in, in summary, I'm agreeing with the staff report. This before us right now is less impactful by far than the original project in whatever terms it was. Uh, the hundred and eighty units to seventy single-family units is a very good, less impactful opportunity compared to what it could have been. It's consistent with the terms of the settlement agreement as our council has indicated. And it complies with CEQA, which has always been very important to this council. I do want to thank both staff and the team, team from New Homes that's here and was here in, in working together to bring forward what we have before us here today and on this council for doing our best to represent the community, the city, the residents, and do what's best for the community within the parameters which we were given. I think New Homes with this project will be a, and I hope and anticipate they'll be a very good partner in our city and our community going forward. I believe in going forward, not backward at this point. Uh, I'm very impressed by the fact that our traffic mitigation or, or the reduced traffic impact of twenty-one hundred plus trips a day to six hundred and sixty trips a day, very important, especially on Los Virginas. And the height from three stories to two stories, those are all good things as far as I'm concerned. Uh, given, given where we're at now, I think this is as good as we could do. I'm going to address Mayor Protem's comments, Peter. I understand both your comments. My thought and reading page fifty-seven on, on the requested, I'm looking at the top of it, I'll read it. "A certificate of occupancy for the seventieth residential condominium unit shall not be issued until the wildlife water source replacement has been fully installed and proven to be operational in the satisfaction of the community development director. The functionality of the installed water source shall be certified in writing by the project biologist or restoration ecologist." And it goes on, on that note. Now, again, I asked specifically, no offense to Matt, our city attorney, but I asked our staff and city manager if they were uh, more than sufficient with this change. And I, I do trust them. I do understand your point. I don't, I don't see a, an issue that it, it does have to be approved, does have to be certified. And you're not talking about just someone, you're talking about either biologist or restoration ecologist. So I'm okay with seventy as it is. And as far as the open space, I don't want our city to be controlling that property. I think that is a risk for our city that we do not want to take. This, by part of the settlement, our, our purpose or my purpose was that the open space remain open in perpetuity. And that whether it's an HOA, whether it is a, a, uh, LMD, whether, whether it is a, uh, conservation organization of some kind, I think that's fantastic. We'll still be watchdogs, we'll still be aware of what's going on. But I don't want our city, and I'm referring to thirty-six, to be responsible in that, uh, as far as controlling the property, controlling who we select. I'm, I'm afraid legally that we're then tying ourselves into something further that we don't want to be involved in. But those are just my comments and I appreciate yours. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment that, um, our approval of this project is a result of a settlement agreement. And I will, in the best interest of the city, support the settlement agreement. And I just wanted to make that clear. So, thank you.
I did want to add something because both you and David said it. Especially what you just said. Um, I too, uh, opposed this project initially, as did the rest of the council. Um, I think the settlement agreement was in the city's best interest. I reviewed it, thought about it very carefully, and I think both sides in the, in the litigation had reasons to enter into the settlement agreement that's in the best interests. And I will vote in favor of this. I did want to reiterate though, my vote in favor should not detract from my overall feeling that the city is no longer bound by the housing element or orders from the state in that regard for reasons I've previously stated on the record.
I've been waiting for that statement all night.
Well, you got it.
Thank you. Okay. So, any for Matt?
Matt, a mayor, if I could note a couple of points. One, on the point that was raised by the community regarding a completion bond, condition number one oh nine on page sixty-three does require a surety grading improvement bond. So it doesn't require completion of the housing. But before the grading permit can be issued, a bond to be approved by the city engineer must be in place that guarantees the completion of the grading. So we should not end up in a situation where the grading is half-done without the funding to take care of it. And second, on the adjusted language from Mayor Protem Kraut, staff would suggest that a little more flexibility may be helpful. And to that extent, adjusting the, the added, let's see, this is the second sentence, "Whatever instrument is used shall legally preserve the open space areas in perpetuity and shall require management by a qualified state or local conservation organization or other qualified nonprofit approved by the city as may be agreed." What I'm dropping out is the maximum extent practical. Let's give ourselves perhaps a little more flexibility as we can convince them to take on. Um, because it may be a case where it's, it's practical, but they just refuse.
But it still has the LMD and HOA part?
And then the, the second sentence remains as adjusted with the, the, namely that it, whatever's left shall be managed by an LMD, not the HOA.
We have two points here. Let's, let's take them separately if we can. The, the first one is how much of the land is managed by a conservation organization? And again, as long as we are I, I have to use that word, trying to maximize that. I mean, in, in reasonableness, I mean, I, I, I don't want, I'm not trying to imply that this, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy will take care of the parkway between the sidewalk and the street here. I, I'm just trying to give our city these original requirements that we had agreed to. I, I, I want to, I want to maximize the amount of true open space to be managed, that's all. So, uh, whatever language you would suggest, I'm, I'm okay with that, Mr. City Attorney. You understand where I'm, I'm coming from here. I, I'm not trying to create an undue burden, that's for certain.
Yes, absolutely.
So we'll take your language for that. The second portion is whether it's going to be managed by an LMD or HOA. And I heard Councilmember Shapiro had some concerns. And I'm not sure which way you were thinking we need to go with that. So if you, if I can turn this over to Councilmember Shapiro for his input?
I think my issue was the city controlling a selection or determination when you have property in an HOA or LMD, uh, that really is, we don't own the property, obviously. We, there, it's in the city, but I don't want us to then assert control unless there's some reason I'm not seeing. And I don't, I don't have a preference, LMD, HOA, that doesn't matter. The purpose, I think our goal of as a council is that that lands, that area is taken care of and it's properly protected. That's it.
Right. I think either is LMD or HOA, I think what I'm hearing from the council is the LMD is preferred over the HOA because it's on the property tax and it's not controlled by the homeowners because the LMD is in the under control by the city. So, in consultation with the homeowners, who are the the rate pairs in that or assessment pairs, not LMD. So it's not city is city, but it's still, we can have the ability through the property tax to ensure that the funding is there, assuming people pay their taxes.
And is the applicant going to accept this change?
I suspect that they will, but it may be worth having them confirm on the record.
And just before we go down this path, could their council? Yes.
Yeah.
So I think this, um, condition of approval, you know, number thirty-six, and I, I don't have the original conditions of approval from the one hundred and eighty unit project in front of me. But the intent originally, um, in putting these together, which, which we appreciate was actually, um, city attorney attempting to create flexibility in the language. Um, with the language, you know, conservation easement and irrevocable offer of dedication, similar instrument. He was actually trying to build in the LMD concept. Um, but there was a section that seemed to suggest that the, you know, a, a conservation organization, it was really a little bit imprecise. So we were just trying to clarify. The intent was always for it to mean this. Um, the, the, the reality is, is that these, the conservation organizations, like, you know, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy or the, you know, we don't know exactly who it'll be yet. They're not going to want to maintain large portions of this project, most likely, um, or own it for that matter. And that's really the big thing. The HOA will own everything. Our, we're proposing the HOA would own everything that basically the conservation groups don't really want to own and maintain and manage. They, of course, want to own the biologically sensitive areas with the seep and, and, and that type of area. But the HOA owning the remainder of the land, having the liability, the insurance, all of that. And then the LMD is in place to ensure it actually is properly maintained. The reason we have kind of the flexibility in the language for a combination is that there's certain areas that are not typically maintained by an LMD. So if there's smaller areas that the HOA will continue to maintain and that are appropriate, we just, I just think it would be helpful for us to be able to maintain flexibility with staff. And, and certainly it'll some, be something that we'll continue to work on with staff to determine exactly which areas are maintained by the LMD or the HOA. Um, but I think it is consistent, in fact, this type of language is consistent with a similar condition that was in the one hundred and eighty unit project. So I just wanted to make sure we all were familiar with that. I think this actually is to the benefit of, of both the, the applicant and city.
Thank you. Did that help?
It, it, it does, but the language is up on the screen there. My, my question, nobody can really quantify it to me solely with respect to the area of open space. Solely with respect to the area of open space that satisfies resource agency mitigation requirements. I still, for the life of me, don't know what area satisfies resource area mitigation requirements.
I don't think anyone knows.
We don't know. So the heart of it is, we won't know that until the resource agencies tell us. They won't tell us for the next six to 18 months. So we have no concern with striking that language.
Okay.
I don't know if it's possible for us to adjust this type live. I don't know if that's possible, tech folks?
It's really
No, but I think
It's just giving the flexibility for the resource agency mitigation, LMD and an HOA. Because we don't know what the resource agency will do.
And so if we strike the reference to the resource agencies, then it's just preserve the open space area by conservation organization or other qualified nonprofit to the extent possible is determined by the city. Anything left, the remaining portion to be managed by an LMD or HOA is determined by the city. The HOA will own any portion of the open space not owned by a conservation organization or nonprofit. And then the easement has to be recorded and approved by us.
That language is fine with me.
I just want to get
Makes sense?
Acceptance from the applicant, so whatever
I can run through that again, perhaps for
Whatever we approve?
So, yeah.
Do you want to come to the mic?
And I apologize for all the back and forth. This is the first time that we've seen this language.
Right.
No, understood. So the first sentence would be as it is. Then the second sentence, whatever instrument is used shall legally preserve the open space areas in perpetuity and shall require management by a qualified state or local conservation organization or nonprofit or other qualified nonprofit. To the extent possible is determined by the city. The remaining portion of the 63.83 acres of open space
I think if we, if I can stop you there.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think actually that's the, the intent with the solely with respect to the area that satisfies resource agency mitigation requirements was to clarify that the only component of the open space that needs to be managed by a conservation organization is, we believe, the SEEP area. But again, once we actually go through the agency approvals, they may, they may determine that there are other areas that are required to be maintained by a conservation organization and, and, and be deeded to that organization. And so I actually do think what we're trying to say is we're limiting it to that. And that the remainder of the 63.83 acres of open space would continue to be owned by the HOA and managed by the LMD.
I think we should keep it because I think it gives the community the most flexibility.
We can take out the solely, we can, maybe, maybe that makes it feel a little bit less restrictive of, you know, with respect to the area that satisfies the resource, resource agency mitigation requirements. Maybe it's the solely that makes it feel
That feels better.
Let's take out solely.
Okay.
So then the next sentence.
Everything stays.
Yeah.
Solely.
Everything but solely. The next sentence, the remaining portion of the acres, 63.83 acres of open space is not required for resource agent mitigation. And there you can strike, I think the same, to strike the not required. So it's whatever's left.
Yes.
The parts of the conservant, the conservation organizations take in the first sentence, we're adjusting. Second sentence, the remaining portion of the 63.83 acres of open space shall be managed by a landscape maintenance district or HOA determined by the city. Add a new sentence, not on the screen. The homeowners association will own any portion of the 63.83 acres of open space not owned by a conservation organization or nonprofit. And then the last sentence is on the screen. The conservation easement, irrevocable offer of dedication or similar instrument shall be recorded prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first residential unit and must be proved as deformed by the city attorney before recording. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm just reading the first couple of sentences. We can work with that.
Okay.
The, the, as, as, I think there was, um, some sentence in there as approved by the city. Or was that, should we make that community development director just to make it clear who's, who the city is?
Yes.
Okay.
The city throughout is the community development director.
Okay.
Throughout this condition, not the rest of it.
What's the matter? You don't want to come back here again?
As much fun as it is drafting live.
On the air.
Okay. Does the council have any further comments? If there's no additional discussion, I would request a motion to adopt resolutions number 2024-1918, approving files number SPR 2024-007, DPR 2024-001, SCP 2024-001, OTP 2024-008, variants 2024-003, and TTM 2024-001. A request for development of approximate, of an approximately 77 acre vacant property located at 4790 Los Virginas Road at the eastern terminus of Agora Road, APNs 2069-078-009 and 2069-078-011, inclusive of 170 single family residential detached condominium units, two detention debris basins, one relocated and one new, a roadway dedication of .08 acres for permanent dedication of a trail access easement through the site and connecting to open space lands to the east and preservation of approximately 63.83 acres, 82.4% of the site as permanent open space. And with the slight change as made by the city attorney, oh, for a condition of approval number 36 and accepted by the applicant. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Peter and then David, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the project is approved. I'd like to move on to future information and agenda items. Is there any direction from council on requested future agenda items? Does the council have any new future agenda item requests? Okay, check register report for the period of 6/9/2024 to August 2nd, 2024. Are there any questions regarding the check register? Seeing then we'll move on to task force reports. Are there any task force reports? I'll start with James.
Yes, I did want to mention that, um, both Councilmember Kraut and I attended on August 3rd the annual, uh, LA County Division of League of California Cities transitional meeting where they swear in the new president and the new board. And that was in, um, Arcadia. And I also wanted to say that next week I will be attending. I'm not sure if anybody else is coming to the annual California Contract Cities Association barbecue sponsored by the LA County Sheriff's Department. That also happens to be in Arcadia at the Arboretum. So those are my task force.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, just a quick correction. That was actually August 1st that we attended the, uh, the league installations.
August 3rd is when I left on my vacation, so I was very focused on that date.
I also attended the Valley Industry Commerce Association on July 30th. And, uh, I think that, no, I'm sorry. And the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meeting on July 15th. I've already shared with you this evening some of that good news. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Just briefly attended a number of SCAG meetings or meetings for SCAG and a VICA event and the Valley Economic Alliance Board meetings. And Ed will talk about CPA, I'm sure. Thanks.
Ed?
Yeah, a couple of quickies. Contract Cities, I now serve on the advocacy committee. We met this afternoon, and I've signed up for their fall educational summit early September in Oceanside, and Councilman Visagian will be featured there as a speaker. Maybe we'll take the train down together. Clean Power Alliance, we've worked, I've worked with the city manager, and he's working with staff regarding REACH code, which I'll explain a little bit more in the future. But it helps municipalities to equitably support decarbonization for new and existing buildings. So stay tuned for that. I'm very excited to bring that to the city, and they have a team that's dedicated for that. So it's not going to take a lot of staff time or money, and there are grants available. So keep your fingers crossed. And lastly, uh, you think the LA Olympics are done? They're not. Eco-development, your mayor and I are working on getting prepared for the Olympics. We want tourists to know about us. We've got a lot to offer, hiking, beach, go on and on, hotels, restaurants. We're going to make everybody know about Calabasas as much as we can. Golf. Corn toss.
Yes.
Thank you. That's my report.
Ed and I had a great economic development meeting with staff, and we did discuss that we want to make sure that Calabasas is on the map for the 2028 Olympics when people visit Los Angeles, that they know of the close proximity of Calabasas to, um, the events taking place. And hopefully we can work with the chamber on that as well. And I had a cog meeting during our break, and that's about it for now. Kinden, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Over the last couple of days, Monday and Tuesday, staff conducted EOC training here in our council chambers, and we, um, practiced a fire moving from south from Malibu Canyon and went through that scenario. It was a great training for us moderated by an outside trainer for that. Mayor, as you mentioned, we have Wild Walnut Park that is done now, and we're ready to open that. But we're also very close to some of our other parks opening up. And so we will be sharing that news with you as the construction is completed. And then finally, our public works department is very close to completing the Green Street project on Los Virginas Road. If you haven't driven by lately, it has changed significantly over the last couple of months and looks great. So we are excited about all of these new projects coming online.
Thank you so much, and thank you to staff for all the great progress being made. Everyone's very appreciative of that. And the city council will now adjourn. We are going to be conducting a special meeting on Friday, August 16th at 12:30 for closed session items only. Our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 28th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Thanks so much and have a good night.